Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is our 97th regular session. Please rise as you are able for the invocation followed by the pledge to the flag.
As we gather here this evening, may we ever mindful of opportunities to render ourselves to the services of fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always that enduring values of life exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which we build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make this a better place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you. Announcements, we are operating under the rules procedure adopted September 24, 2013. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for August, we are having a work session at 4:00 PM Tuesday. We are aiming to end at 5:30 so that everyone here can attend the national night out. There is no meeting on Tuesday, August 9th, and we will have work sessions on the 16th and 23rd at 4:00 PM. And our regular session will be on the 5th Tuesday in August at 7:00 PM, the August 30th. And at this point, we'll have three people eligible for appointment or reappointment to the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority. All of their terms are to expire on August 1st, 2019. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the appointment of Lee Roy Burton, Randy Catlin, and Brian Selders to the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority, all terms to expire on August 1, 2019. Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? All I can say is there are some very experienced and knowledgeable professionals on this board, and they do an excellent job, so I appreciate their service. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the appointments will be made, and we'll get them sworn in as soon as possible. Citizen comments. I do not have anyone signed up to speak this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Okay. Moving on to our public hearing on the Land Management Code updates for 2016.
Good evening. This is Steve Bachmiller from the Department of Planning and City Administration. This is the annual package of amendments to the Hagerstown Land Management Code. To give you a little bit of background on the process, the Land Management Code was established and refined between 2008 and 2013, consolidating four separate land use and development ordinances into a single document. Planning and Code Administration Department perpetually looks for ways to upgrade the ordinance and correct errors when they are discovered. The ongoing review and evaluation of ordinances is good planning practice. In 2014, staff established a process where all suggestions for amending the code are considered together at one time on an annual basis, so we don't have an ongoing chain of smaller individual amendments and the associated cost of hearings, et cetera, consuming resources. And this package is the second annual update proposal, the first being in 2014, 2015. The planning staff began reviewing proposals with the Planning Commission in November of 2015. Discussions were held on various provisions over the next following several months. Once a package material was settled on, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed changes on May 25th, and voted to forward this package to the mayor and council for its consideration on June 8th. This hearing is being advertised in accordance with Maryland law, and I'll introduce into the record by reference the certification of legal advertisement for this hearing. The mayor and council typically keeps the record open for 10 days following the hearing to accept additional written material from interested parties. This annual package for 2016 contains 33 proposals. In the packet that you've received and is available to the public through our website, proposals number 19 through 33 are cleanup proposals that correct minor errors and inconsistencies and clarify wording, and do not impact the ordinance in any substantial way. Item 23 is a group of 23, excuse me, a group of 11 extremely minor fixes that were listed together due to their extremely limited nature. Proposals number 1 through 18 contain amendments that affect the substance of the code, and those are listed as follows. Number 1 removes an orphaned reference to the repealed adequate public facilities ordinance. Number 2 clarifies that the fee and lieu compliance provision in the forest conservation ordinance will be paid at the rate in effect when the applicant moves to pay the fee. Three clarifies the process by which the zoning administrator may consider and decide confirmations of non-conforming uses. Four prohibits beekeeping in residential zoning districts. Five compels homeowners' association covenants to be recorded before plat's that subdivided land by requiring a signature block on the plat, referring to where the covenants are recorded in the land records. Number 6 defines flea market and requires compliance with parking requirements, minimum distance for vendor display from property lines, and landscaping along property lines adjoining residential and commercialized and properties. Number 7 refines and simplifies the maximum permitted total gross size of all detached garages, sheds, and other accessory buildings in residential districts to 900 square feet. Number 8 permits satellite simulcast bedding facilities in the CCMU and CG zoning districts. Number 9 limits driveways and front yards to one vehicle in width, except when accessing a two-car garage, and discourages parking lots in the middle of front yards. Number 10 creates use setbacks and buffer requirements for outdoor storage of merchandise, business supplies, and other outdoor storage for any new such use to be shown on a site plan, but also requires these setbacks and buffers when no site plan is required. Existing uses, however, are exempt. Number 11 adjusts the side setback of buildings and apartment complexes to a minimum of 20 feet, excuse me, in residential districts with additional setback of one foot in height, setback for any additional one foot in height when the building exceeds 20 feet in height. Number 12 creates a clawback provision on enforcement for work performed in accordance with a building or zoning permit issued in error, subject to certain conditions. Number 13 creates minimum setback requirements for retaining walls in order to ensure they can be maintained by their owner on their own property. Number 14, I will skip momentarily and come back to. Number 15, adjustments to current zoning limitations on home daycare activities as licensed by the state to make the city's regulation more, but not entirely consistent with the state's. Number 16 exempts the minimum state requirements for the posting of gasoline prices from the city's graphic or sign regulations. Number 17 permit motor vehicle sales in the CL, Commercial Local Zoning District entirely indoor, subject to conditions. And number 18 adjusts permitted use language for residential facilities with in-house professional care, adding the term "one per lot" to the description. Going back to number 14, in a past issue, the mayor and council asked the Planning Commission to review the issue of six-foot privacy fences inside and rear yards when a property is a corner lot or has a street behind it where that road is a higher classification, a collector or arterial road, compared to the street that the house actually faces. This was generated by a situation where a property owner who has a property backing onto Eastern Boulevard had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals asking for a variance in order to put a six-foot privacy fence in their rear yard. The Planning Commission reviewed this issue, and we, as their staff and them, together, we took several attempts to try to come up with wording that fit, that could be used as regulatory for all situations, but we're finding these situations to be few and far between, and individually, their circumstances vary from site to site, so we found no real clear way to create uniform regulations to address this issue. So the Planning Commission recommends that the existing system remain in place, so there's few properties that are affected by, they do have the relief of going to the Board of Zoning Appeals to obtain a variance, and it also allows adjoining property owners to comment through the public hearing process. And if there are certain conditions that create a borderline case where there's certain concerns that need to be addressed, the BZA can apply reasonable conditions to an approval. The entire proposal, package that the mayor and council has had, and it's also posted on the website at www.hagerstownmd.org/index-aspx-nid=592. So if someone was to visit the city's website and go to that particular link, they will find the entire, and all of the wording, the entire proposal and all the wording thereof.
So the issue with the fences, the issue is that people couldn't put a privacy fence in their backyard?
In their backyard when it's up against a street right of way. All street rights of way are considered front yards.
Right.
And they're limited to a fence that is three feet in height.
Okay.
So when you have a side yard or a rear yard, if the side yard or a rear yard...
You just had to get a variance.
Yes, you need to get a variance. If the side yard or rear yard is up against a street that is of the same or lower classification as the front, where the front of the house is, you can still have the privacy fence. Where it gets into it is when the side street or the street to the rear is of a higher classification, much more visible, much more traffic, and more often, faster traffic, site visibility issues, there's a number of factors that played into that as far as why you, there's a limitation. You still can have a front yard fence, which is limited to three feet in height, but if you want to go above that, it would require a trip to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Gotcha. Any questions from council or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Munson.
I think early on in your presentation there, which is a good summary, I think you said there was a public hearing before the commission, after the document was finalized.
Yes.
Did that public hearing result in any significant changes to what is in front of us tonight?
I don't believe so. There might have been a little bit of tweaking here and there, but I don't remember, and planning directors kind of got the same reaction I do, I don't recall any major changes.
The commission has already...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this change in the land management code, changes in the land management code? I know we did not have anyone signed up, so we will keep the record open for at least 10 days. I believe this will be introduced next month. Is that correct? When are the changes? What's the timeline?
Looking to introduce it in August for adoption in September, effect in October. No, it's one month later, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're going to need a little bit of additional time. Usually, we introduce it real quick. We're asking for a few weeks delay because we're going to have to collate all of these changes into the ordinance, and then cross-check all of the cross-references to make sure nothing got thrown off, and that's going to be a bit labor-intensive. So we're looking at introducing in September, adopting in October, effective November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, at this time, we will close the public hearing and move on to the city administrator comments.
Nothing additional, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council comments, I'll start on my left with Councilmember Nye, and we'll work our way over.
Mark, this one's for you.
Central lot we're having a major problem with, and I want to know exactly what can be done there as far as signage, that people are going to listen to us. That has to do with loitering, it has to do with trash, it has to do with just about everything that's down there. Not only central lot, but we're looking at the other lots too, and I'm just disgusted with all of it, as well as I know Kristen is. We are the ones that do go down there and park, and we see it, and I prefer going there to park, but we're having more and more, and when I've asked a question as far as this, it's because I've been told we have no signage. So what can we have as far as putting it there that no one's going to end up taking us to court over because of it being a public parking area? It's horrendous, it really is, and it's getting more and more, and I guess my agitation tonight is, is that we have laws on the books, and there are those people out there that says, "This is all we do. You just continue to make laws and laws." And unfortunately for us, laws have been made that we never put in place, but they still should be abided to, and it doesn't happen in a lot of cases. There's always that loophole that we're faced with, and I guess I'm just getting more agitated with the whole thing. So I just needed to know as far as the parking area right now.
So the issue is loitering and whether or not you have signage?
It is, yeah, it's signage.
Proper signage to be able to enforce the law.
Whatever signage that we can write, because I know the people, I heard when I came in here early the one morning, and it's the people with the laundromat, and the one lady said, "You know, I've been out here, I've been cleaning this up," and she was talking to two other people, and I just happened to go by, and it is horrendous. It's absolutely horrendous as to what you have to see between the panhandling that goes on, you know, and unless we actually have something in place, what is it our police can actually do? You know, I mean, I know for loitering, any of this, and no trespass, we as individuals have got to have it, that it's posted, that they are aware of that before the police can actually do anything. Does that hold true for city?
I'll look into it.
Okay?
I think that we'll probably get together with the chief, maybe the director of public works.
I just need, I need our officers to be able to have some teeth in order to do something, and I really, quite frankly, am agitated enough that when things do go to court, that there are those that really does not like city government, that it usually goes the way of the ones that are doing the complaining. And again, we've got laws on the books, but it's like, why do we have them?
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think that was enough agitation for tonight.
All right. Councilmember Munson?
Yes, I'd like to concur with Penny. I think she raises a really good point. I've had innumerable complaints about loitering, particularly where the laundromat is and other places nearby. And one thing I'd like to pick up on as well, which is related to it, is the amount of trash on that block of Franklin Street. I think that some people, I hope it's not the people that live there, think that those squares that enclose the trees are trash dumps. The weeds grow in them, there's always trash in them. I have been by there several times recently, and they're never free of trash. Something really does, that's the main thoroughfare coming into the city. Something really does need to be done, and whatever can possibly be done, I would certainly appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Metzner?
In, sir. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Brubaker?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Alshire?
I was actually talking to somebody that lives downtown the other evening, I forget his name now, but anyway, he said he went out with the hand truck one night, and there's one of our older green trash cans right out here that's on this side of the entrance to central lot, and he said he physically moved it to the other side in front of the laundromat and liquor store. Anyway, just his two cents that folks seem to be able to put trash in on one side of the lot, rather than the 20 extra feet they have to walk on the upside of the lot, just a suggestion.
All right. Any other comments?
Somebody came and moved it back. Maybe we just need to add a trash can. Now we have more trash cans.
I just want to mention that I am honored and have agreed to be a VIP server at the Children's Village Breakfast. That will be happening on September 7th from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, so I hope everyone will come out for that good cause, and allow me to serve you breakfast. It's a great event. It'll be at the Elks Lodge on September 7th, which I believe is a Wednesday, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. So I'll be at table seven. Come and look for me. Other than that, just want to mention that we've had a lot of great discussion. Staff and I met today to follow up on the housing summit. We're still collating all that raw data from the discussions that were held, and we're going to continue to work on bringing those folks together to keep the conversation going, so stay tuned. And with that, we'll move on to the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of the minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on June 7th, June 14th, and June 21st, all of 2016.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda, all of one item.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all of the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. Have a motion made by Mr. Metzner, second by Mr. Alshire. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the item is approved. Under unfinished business, item A is the approval of an ordinance for a local conversion district overlay at 400 Jonathan Street.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve an ordinance for a local conversion district overlay, including the three conditions endorsed by the Planning Commission on property located at 400 Jonathan Street.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, second by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Item B is the approval of an ordinance for a drinking water bond, Series 2016, for RC Wilson, traveling screen replacements, and pump station improvements.
Mayor hereby move to adopt an ordinance as introduced on July 19, 2016, authorizing the city of Hagerstown to issue and sell upon its full faith and credit general obligation bonds to the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1 million. Proceeds from the sale of the bonds will be used for the public purpose, the financing of the RC Wilson Water Plant, traveling screen replacement, and pump station improvements, as more fully described in the ordinance, together with related expenses and costs of issuance. Staff hereby directed to proceed in working with the city's bond council, develop necessary detailed resolutions and other documents required to prepare for the sale of the bonds as directed by this ordinance. As specified in the ordinance, details and authorizations regarding the amount, timing, method of sales or sales, and other sale details will be outlined in a detailed resolution to be presented to this body for approval at a future date prior to the issuance of the bonds.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, second by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ordinance is approved. New business, the introduction of an ordinance for a deed and ease agreement with the Ellsworth Properties LLC for the mural of unusual size.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the execution of a deed and easement agreement to permit the city of Hagerstown to create and maintain a mural in connection with the Hagerstown Cultural Trail at 67 West Baltimore Street.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, second by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. With murals that we have had in the past, and we still have, and that's one that is up under the underpass up in the West End, and I can't remember who it was that had done it, but I know that they've never kept them up. And my concern is, is that this is going to be maintained by the city, so hopefully that means that it then will be taken care of, like it should be taken care of, because the other ones certainly have not. And the one in the West End was absolutely beautiful, but again, it was failure to do whatever we had to do. So, and also, the question is, and I should have asked about this beforehand, is this one of the ones that the money is actually going towards as far as who's going to be doing the mural? Is the person being paid? Sorry, Rodney. The heat has had me, so my brain is like defunct.
Yeah, this is part of the overall art...
That's what I thought, the contract, okay.
That was approved.
Yeah. Thank you.
We actually have another mural across from the post office. The old Vaisal mural is another one that we already have, too.
Yeah, but I'm saying, and I don't know if, because I'm not going at it, okay, but I know that we've had in the past, and especially the one that was down here, that was on Elizabeth Hager Center, and we ended up that one went because of it not being taken care of, and that is a big concern, you know, when you have something of this magnitude...
Well, and also how it's done, too, in terms of...
I don't, I don't know.
Being in the outdoors on a wall, I mean, there's a special method and...
There is.
...way to apply the paint, which is beyond my expertise.
But again, like I said, you know, it's a matter of thought, and I know up in the West End, that one was absolutely gorgeous with the train and all, and it still is, you know, but that's a big concern with a huge mural, mural it's going to be.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
The ayes have it, and the ordinance is introduced. Item B, the approval of a resolution amending the city charter, Article 8, personnel.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move from mayor and city council approval of a resolution amending the charter of the city of Hagerstown, Article 8, by adding Section 808, collective bargaining for non-management employees. Section 808 will permit non-management employee groups of the city to designate a union to act as their exclusive representative, and to engage in collective bargaining with the city regarding wages, benefits, and working conditions.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, second by Ms. Nye. Any discussion?
Yes. So obviously, we had a little bit of discussion last week on this issue, and I'm going to try and collect my thoughts and go through a bit of my comment to continue on that. And the first comment is probably a general one to say that I have no disagreement with entertaining and considering this proposal. Here is the issue that I have in relation to the context in which it's occurring. So, you know, when this body came into office, we came in at a time that was, you know, coming out of economic downturn, you know, the city saw freezes and furloughs and, you know, personnel reductions and things like that. And when we came in, you know, most of us recognized, you know, the obvious need to address that issue to the degree and extent that we could affordably do so as the economy improved, and on top of that, you know, to the tune of about 12 and a half cents on the tax rate that I think pretty much every taxpayer now feels. We also adjusted fees, we increased staff, you know, and I felt that we sort of ticked off, if you will, a checklist of generally everything that I think we sort of heard our employee groups saying that, you know, that we needed to adjust course on. And in those early discussions and contract negotiations and approvals, one in particular, you know, we sat down with each entity or their representative entities and said, you know, here's sort of that pot of money, you know, we need to figure out how your specific group, you know, would best like to structure, you know, sending that out among its membership. And I think in that one, at least one of those instances, we're led to believe that, you know, while one group had a me-too, you know, this is how they wanted it, and it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be utilized, they understood that other groups were beginning things differently. And we turn around, I'm going to say maybe a year later, and the issue is grieved on the basis that we gave one group, but we didn't give the group that said that they wanted it differently. You know, and this isn't uncommon as a member of council for this to occur, and so, you know, that grievance, we not only lost, but we lost to a degree of decision that we didn't even think it would get to. So it was over and above the difference, and we said, okay, you know, we accepted that, only to have, you know, the contract go through, you know, a full, you know, annual period, and receive another grievance that says, hey, you know, we didn't, we didn't expect the language that we agreed to to be written in the manner and interpreted the way that you're interpreting it. And so, you know, here, in this instance, we get another grievance on the premise that we didn't mean what we wrote down and agreed to. that, that we didn't mean what we wrote down and, and agreed to. And, and we lost that, and I think, and numbers escape me at the moment, I think it was about 150,000, you know, and I would look to staff, you know, and say, you know, I'm sure that there may be other minor grievances, but, but these are sort of, you know, group-wide grievances that occur. And, you know, we make adjustment to, to account for that. Then we fast forward about a year, a year and a half in this administration, and contracts are, you know, coming to the end of their term, and, you know, all of them are pretty much on the same schedule. And I think this is, what I'm trying to do is, is, is provide a little bit of information that I think that our citizens aren't often fully made aware of in these deliberations. And one part of that, as we fast forward, was, there was consideration to say, okay, there are a number of things wrong with the contracts or, 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 you know, not agreeable, you know, among the body, within the contracts that need addressed. And we, we hear our staff tell us, you know, these things need addressed. And, you know, one of the considerations is, okay, do you let the contracts expire and, and, you know, address them from, from sort of scratch? And, and we were clearly given the impression, you know, not to do that. And so, you know, it's sort of, you know, the, the last moment, you know, we send a letter out and we say, hey, everybody, you know, we're not going to do that, we understand, we don't, you know, you don't want us to do that, and, you know, we'll continue to recognize the contracts, and we'll work through these issues, recognizing that there, that there's some on both sides of the table. We'll work through these under current terms. No sooner, no sooner do we agree to that and continue upon this path than we now turn around and it appears, and I don't know, you know, to what degree I'm, I'm allowed to, to share information, but the only folks that never seem to get this information is the citizens, so, so I'm going to share this. And it appears we get grieved again from one of the groups saying, hey, you've continued, you know, with the contracts, you didn't let them expire, but in their continuation, now this other group is, is getting something different than what they should be getting based on the terms of just a simple continuation, and we'd like that, too. No negotiation to that process, no deliberation to that process, and it happens to be the same group, by the way, that is, is bringing these two issues to the forefront for our citizens to vote on, which we're apparently going to nullify in part here this evening. And, and we're going to do so knowing, knowing full well that we've now received that, and that this time, if that type of grievance is won, it's not, it's not 100,000, it's not 150,000 to, to, you know, to the cost of the budget, but it's, it's a cost of hundreds of thousands, because if one receives favorable decision in that particular, in this particular case, all will likely be opened up to receive favorable consideration. It, it, it might as well be a me-too clause across the board. And we're doing this this evening, knowing full well that, that, you know, that it hasn't, for lack of a better term, been an olive branch, if you will, that's been extended, you know, in that effort, but, but rather a challenge. And, and there is no negotiation for the extension of, of, of this provision, knowing that, that, that new grievance sits out there. And, and I have every belief that before the ink dries on what you're about to do this evening, the council, the mayor and council, not me, what you're about to do this evening, before the ink dries on that in September, that the second part of this will be just as, just as unequivocally challenged in, in similar manner, probably a more public manner, you know, nobody's naive here. Again, without any recognition that this provision is being given. And I, I, I can't for the life of me, you know, and, and maybe simply as a citizen, I just can't for the life of me understand why, knowing that this is the path we have traveled, even in the face of, of, of writing the course of, of, of four or five years of stagnation, that we're going to do so without sitting down and even saying to any members of those groups, if we're going to do this, you know, you really need to reconsider a grievance that once filed has the potential of, of causing significant, significant impact to the budget that you're attempting to improve, to improve those conditions. And I just, I, I, I don't, I don't understand what, what the, what the thought process is in a complete absence of negotiation to get to that point before providing this provision here this evening.
I guess I'll respond by saying, as I said last week, I think that doing this, making this move, is the right thing to do in and of itself, and doing this makes it very clear what the question is on the ballot this November, and that will be focused on binding arbitration. You know, I don't, I think the way the question is written, I think if nobody said anything to anybody, I think citizens will vote against it because it's just confusing and it doesn't make any sense to most ordinary people. But, you know, I, I did meet this morning, actually, with members of the fire union, and they have told me, as I think Lou has also acknowledged, that they understand that they made mistakes when they were going through the petition process, that they hired third parties that maybe did not always provide accurate information to the public who were signing those petitions. And I think that they would probably, although I don't want to put words in their mouth, would probably admit that the whole thing was a little bit of overreach. If they would have come to us and said, look, can we get official recognition, because honestly, their fear is, the city, they are powerless ultimately, when it comes to the recognition of their unions, that the city council at any time could decide to terminate their contracts, because they have no formal standing with the city in terms of, you know, the recognition of their, their bargaining units. So I think, you know, being somebody who does support collective bargaining, I, I don't see this resolution that we're, we're putting forward tonight to approve the charter to recognize the unions, I think, does not put us in a position that, that will make us vulnerable to, to, to the real issue, which is the binding arbitration. And I made it very clear, I still don't support that. If it is the will of the people, then we have to certainly, you know, we have to look at that. Then we, you know, I think we should go with the will of the people. But that being said, if we're in a hypothetical world, I think we need to, I think some of the things that you point out are just part of the broken process that I've observed we've had in, in union negotiations, which is that we have these four separate tracks that not everybody is on the same page. I think often the bargaining units don't know, one to the other, what is being asked, and so that creates even more confusion, misunderstanding, distrust even between the bargaining, bargaining units, quite frankly. So I really think that, you know, and I've suggested this in public and to the last city administrator and to, and to our current city administrator, that we, you know, continue talking with these bargaining units, but in a, as a collect, a collective, that we're all in this together, we're all looking at the same pie to, to slice up when it comes to the city budget. And, and, you know, I think we should try to work with these bargaining units to assure that even if we did get voter affirmation of this question of whether or not we should include binding arbitration in our charter, I still believe that we should work out a process with these bargaining units to do everything in the, in the future as, everything is possible in the future to avoid having to get to that point, including, you know, a written process that if we get to an impasse, we go through, you know, so many other hoops, if you will, or, or layers of, of communication before we end up with the binding arbitration decision, including some form of mediation. Because I do think that it's best when folks can work out their own problems and not have some third-party, unelected, unaccountable person making those decisions for us. So again, I think this, tonight, approving this resolution is a strategy to make very clear, A, that a majority of the mayor and council believe that recognizing the collective bargaining rights of our non-management employees is, is the right thing to do, but also to clarify exactly what the question will be in the fall, which should be focused on binding arbitration. In other words, nobody can go out there, even if the officials in the union say, you know, we're not going to go out there and, you know, lie to people and tell them that they're, you know, the city council's trying to take away their collective bargaining rights, which is what honestly people did here when they were signing those petitions, that we got this whole thing started. But it would be very clear that that is not the case, because this mayor and council has affirmed those rights, and the question should solely and specifically be focused on whether or not binding arbitration is a good amendment to our city government. So, that's my response. I do share some of the concerns about the, you know, the, you know, the, the divide between the bargaining units, and of course, the me-too clause is a terrible, terrible provision that I think should not be in any of the contracts. But I'll take any other comments, discussion on the motion.
All right, the motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Ms. Nye, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved, four to one. Onto item C, the approval of a resolution specifying the day and hours of the referendum for the proposed charter amendment submitted to this legislative body by petition of qualified voters and specifying the text of the ballot question.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of a resolution directed at question shall appear in the ballot for the general election of the city of Hagerstown on November 8, 2016, asking voters whether the charter of the city of Hagerstown should be amended to include collective bargaining and binding arbitration for non-management employees of the police and fire departments.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Ms. Nye, any discussion? I do want to read the question. Question will appear as question A, municipal referendum petition, proposed amendment to the Hagerstown city charter establishes a new section 802A of Article 8 of the charter of the city of Hagerstown, which provides that non-management employees of the police and fire departments shall be entitled to designate a union to act as their exclusive representative to engage in collective bargaining with the city, and which further requires the city council to pass an ordinance which provides for binding arbitration with a neutral arbitrator in order to resolve labor disputes between the city and the exclusive representative. And you can vote for the referred law or against the referred law, and that question will be on the ballot on November 8. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Item D is the approval of a resolution for a parking lease with a central parking lot in the state of Maryland.
Mayor, I hereby move approval of a resolution to approve a parking lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation for the rental of 10 parking spaces in the central parking lot. Term of the lease is two years, commences July 26, 2016. Annual rent to be paid is $5,760. Two to six.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the lease is approved. Item E is approval of a resolution for a similar parking lease with the state of Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for approval of a resolution to approve a parking lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland Department of the Judiciary for the rental of five parking spaces in the university district parking deck. Term of the lease is two years, commences July 26, 2016. Annual rent to be paid for the city is $3,720.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the lease is approved. Item F, approval of a resolution, another parking lease for the state of Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for approval of a resolution to approve a parking lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland Department of Education, Division of Rehabilitation Services, and the Department of Juvenile Services, for the rental of nine parking spaces in the university district parking deck. Term of the lease is two years, commences July 26, 2016. Annual rent to be paid to the city is $6,696.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The lease is approved. Item G is the approval of a resolution, an MOU with USMH for operations of University Plaza.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution for the execution and delivery of an amendment to the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the city of Hagerstown and the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown for operations of the University Plaza. This MOU sets forth the responsibilities of both parties regarding the operation and use of the plaza from June 30, 2016, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Ms. Nye, any discussion?
Um, yes. On paragraph three, first page, last sentence, indicates with the exception of the portion delineated area reserved for university-related activities only. I don't see where that is when I look at the exhibit.
Are you talking about number three?
Well, I'm talking about, yes, paragraph number three, which is the last, the last sentence on the first page going over to the second page, refers to the exception of the portion delineated area reserved for university-related activities only.
I think you have a good point. It's supposed to be the area around the entry plaza at the university building in the lower right corner. I think my exhibit is outdated, so I need to get the right exhibit in there, so thank you for.
Okay, but just around the entry plaza, that's fine, Rodney, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Item H is approval of a resolution, an MOU with USMH for the services at University Plaza.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution for the execution and delivery, delivery of an amendment to the memorandum of understanding MOU between the city of Hagerstown and the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown for police services of University Plaza from July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, the resolution is approved. Item I is the approval of a resolution, an MOU with USMH for groundskeeping services at the University Plaza.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution, authorizing the execution and delivery of a memorandum of understanding MOU between the city of Hagerstown and the university system of Maryland at Hagerstown for groundskeeping services for University Plaza from July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2019. The MOU sets forth the responsibilities of both parties to maintain the plaza.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is approved. Item J is the approval of a resolution.
Item J is the approval of a resolution, an agreement with the Joint Veterans Council of Washington County for a Vietnam War Veterans Monument.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Joint Veterans Council of Washington County to support the creation of Vietnam War Veterans Monument. The monument will be located west of South Walnut Street in City Park. The city is donating the land, but has no financial obligation towards the monument.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
The only thing that I want to say is I had to jump on that because my brother has been waiting and waiting. He's a Vietnam veteran and he wants to be able to live long enough to hopefully see it done. And thank you very much, city, because we really need to have this one.
Thank you to the Joint Veterans Council. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is approved. Item K is the approval of a license agreement with Brook Green Gardens Inc. for the use of the Diana of the Chase image for the Hagerstown Cultural Trail.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize the city to enter into a license agreement with Brook Green Gardens Inc. in Merle's Inlet, South Carolina, that allows the city of Hagerstown to use the image of Diana of the Chase, which was originally created by Diana Hyatt Huntington in 1922 as the logo for the new cultural trail.
I'd just like to correct the record. It's Anna Hyatt Huntington, not Diana, for the record.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I will be voting yes on this, and the reason I will be is that there's not money that is in this. Anything that pertains to money, I will vote against because I did not say yes to the trail. So I haven't lost my mind, that's the reason I'm doing it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the agreement is approved. Item L is the approval of a contract for South Prospect Street wall replacement.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for approval of a contract with Milton Stamper Builders, Hagerstown, Maryland, the amount of $255,425 for the replacement of the 140 feet of masonry retaining wall on the northeast side of the drive bridge on South Prospect Street. 2015, an automobile accident destroyed a portion of the wall, and the 150-plus-year-old wall is generally deteriorated to a point of needing reconstruction.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Ms. Nye. It's a pretty good wall for 150 years old. It was well-built to begin with. Any other discussion?
Yes, two things. One, the appearance of the wall will be retained. The existing pavers will be taken off, new stuff built behind it, and it'll be facade, but will be replaced. Is that right, Rodney?
That's right. The stone that's in the wall now will be the stone facing of the block wall built in behind the wall. Does that make sense?
Yes.
We're going to build a block wall and then take the stone from the stone walls.
As long as it looks like that part that originally was there.
Exactly.
Right. The second point is, this is, illustrates the need for highway user revenues and how we're on the bottom of the total poll paying highway taxes for city, county, state, and yet, you know, not getting the appropriate amount back. And this is another example of a big hit we're taking without any help from any other party. But it's, it's wise to do it now when we need to do it.
Until it falls down.
So I commend the staff for, for doing it. It's, it's an easy thing to overlook and save in the budget until you really have a serious issue.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the contract is approved. Item M is the approval of permission to finalize an MDE grant for energy-water infrastructure programs at the R.C. Wilson Water Plant and Pump Station 4.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve the water division motion granting permission for city staff to finalize the grant policy process to receive an MDE grant for energy-water infrastructure programs at the R.C. Wilson Water Plant and Pump Station 4 in the amount of $842,940.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I would like to congratulate our staff on, on seeking out that grant. That's a sizable grant, and it will be very helpful.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and permission is approved. Item N is the approval of permission to finalize an MDE grant for improvements at the R.C. Wilson Plant and System Water Tanks.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council approve the water division motion granted, granting permission for city staff to finalize the grant policy process to receive an MDE grant for improvement at the R.C. Wilson Water Plant and System Water Tanks in the amount of $691,251.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and approval is granted. Item O is the approval of liability property insurance for FY 2017.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the fiscal 2017 renewal of coverage with local government insurance trust for liability and property insurance in the amount of $409,769.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item P is the approval of an agreement, a cooperative state and local agreement with the USDA.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and council approve approval to authorize the renewal of cooperative state and local agreement with the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency. This agreement states the city of Hagerstown will detail three experienced officers in the Hagerstown resident office for a period of not less than two years. It also states the city of Hagerstown will be responsible for salary, overtime, and benefits of the three HPD officers.
Seven.
Period of this agreement is October 1, 2016, through September 30, 2017.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshauer, seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, approval is granted. Item Q is the approval of an after-school program at Parkside Community Center.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval for funding of the after-school program at Parkside Community Center. The HHA provides a variety of constructive after-school programs to the area youth. This program runs for the 2016, 2017 school year at a cost of $18,881.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Funding is approved. Item R is the approval of an after-school program with the BTJ Dance Group.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approval for funding of the BTJ Dance Group after-school program that is held at the Suman Avenue Community Building. The HHA provides a variety of constructive after-school programs to area youth. This program runs for the 2016, 2017 school year at the cost of $3,500.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshauer, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the funding is approved. Final item is approval of a purchase, Public Works Dump Truck with Snow Plow.
Mayor, hereby move, mayor and council approve the purchase of a Public Works vehicle to replace Unit 20 in the amount of $142,438 fiscal year '17 from McCafferty Ford. Pricing is provided through the State of Pennsylvania Co-Stars Program.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yeah, an example of another thing that's wrong with the, with the municipal status in Maryland. You know, we maintain state highways. We maintain many miles of state highways in the city. This, you know, this doesn't directly relate to that except to the extent that we have to hire crews and buy equipment to maintain what the state maintains as soon as you get into the county. You're in the county here, but as soon as you get outside the city line, we wouldn't have to make as many equipment purchases or hire as many crews. And it's just one more way that we're at the bottom of the total.
That's a good point. Any other discussion?
No, Mayor, I'd like to mention this. A few months ago, we purchased a truck. Mayor and city council made a decision to purchase a truck. And for our efforts, we got a nasty letter to the editor talking about how the writer of the letter could, could do a lot better in terms of, of the cost of that particular truck. And I just want to reassure the public that, that this is an expensive truck. There's no question about it. But this is for the, what we needed for, and this is the lowest price that we were able to get.
Well, again, people have to remember that this includes all the pertinent equipment. It's not just the basic truck like you'd go out and buy for your own general utility use. It's all the equipment needed to operate that truck over many years. Same with public safety equipment.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, the purchase is approved, and we are adjourned.